Good evening, tonight is February 11th, 2014. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to be used to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's public input. Is there any citizen who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00. May I have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Six present, five present, sorry.
Please note that Mr. Alivo is absent this evening and Dr. O'Leary is not here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of January 28th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Domingo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote by show of hands, please. All in favor, motion carries. The next minutes would be the Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting, held on January 29th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Domingo?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Any discussion on those minutes? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Section 3, Number 6, it says if the issue of Medicare reimbursement needed to be addressed. I believe that that should say Medicaid.
Are there any other changes, revisions? Okay, we'll make those corrections. Vote to, by show of hands, please. Vote to approve. We have four yes. Mrs. Quinney is abstaining.
Okay.
Motion carries. Chairwoman's announcements. The town clerk has asked me to remind residents to return the annual street listing survey. That was something that was sent out last week. Everybody should have received that in the mail. If you could return those surveys to the town clerk's office as soon as possible, that would be appreciated. School vacation week, just as a reminder, is next week, February 17th to the 21st. There's no school. A short time ago, we had voted on the ad hoc facilities committee. I just wanted everybody to know that information on that committee will be posted on the district website later this week. That's our intent for citizens who might be interested in joining that committee. Or you can contact the school committee through the superintendent's office if you're interested in serving on that committee. I wanted to follow up on a citizen concern at the last meeting regarding locked doors at Southbridge Middle High School. At this time, the doors will remain locked due to student safety concerns. There's no present way to cordon off areas of the building, the back areas of the building from the front of the building. But that's something that is being looked at by the superintendent and the director of maintenance, to see if they can come up with some sort of a solution to allow the building to be more accessible. And I just wanted to let everybody know about that. I spoke to Mr. Gauthier and thank him for bringing that to our attention. And finally, I do want to discuss the teacher contract. I had mentioned that we would discuss some terms, and I just wanted to let the public know, so I have a statement here on that. The Southbridge School Committee and Southbridge Education Association recently agreed on a one-year contract for the period July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. The SEA's previous contract had expired on June 30th, 2012. The SEA did not request contract negotiations for the 2012-2013 school year, and consequently, their collective bargaining agreement was automatically renewed for one year through June 30th, 2013. To prepare for negotiations in the current school year, the school committee's negotiation subcommittee compared teacher salaries and contracts in the surrounding communities of Auburn, Brimfield, Brookfield, Charlton, Dudley, Holland, Lester, Oxford, Sturbridge, Wales, Webster, and Worcester. The committee discovered Southbridge had the lowest starting salaries in the region. In addition, the committee determined the Southbridge School District employees opting for health insurance under the town's municipal contract paid a significantly higher percentage of health insurance premium costs compared to other communities. In Southbridge, they pay a 50-50 share. All other districts paid a significantly higher portion, 75% to 90%. In an effort to address these economic disparities and improve the district's ability to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, the negotiation subcommittee established a new base wage salary schedule, which provides more competitive salaries for all steps and lanes on the teaching grid. For example, the starting salary for teachers with a bachelor's degree is now $42,000, and the starting salary for those with a master's is $46,000. This is average for the area. Should be noted, there are several communities, such as Lester and Webster, who do offer higher starting salaries, but we felt that this was a fair compromise. The new contract addresses other inequities as well. It balances step increases, which previously varied under the former contract, under the previous contract. The former agreement included a number of employees who were off the grid and received compensation which differed from their peers due to longevity or other factors. The new salary grid ensures all employees are reflected. The agreement reduces personal time and limits the number of teachers absent from each building during the beginning and end of the school year. It also standardizes the length of the teacher's workday, which had also varied, for elementary and middle high school staff. Those working under the same contract are now required to work the same number of hours. Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes.
We have not voted this. I still believe that until it's voted by the school committee, this is not an official agreement between SEA and the school committee, and I don't think we should be discussing this in public at this time.
We have ratified the contract, Dr. Domingo.
We have not voted in the school committee setting. We said we were going to vote on it today, and it's not on the agenda.
Thank you. I just want to continue at this time. The new contract is effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. The financial package is retroactive to November 4th, 2013. Funding for the increase was included in the FY14 budget, and no additional appropriation was requested. The school committee did not negotiate a multi-year deal with the teachers' union because members expressed interest in developing a new contract with the SEA for FY15 and beyond using interest-based bargaining, which commonly results in outcomes that meet the needs of both parties and enable labor and management to work together on their shared mission of advancing student success. Increasing student achievement is the school committee's top priority, and teachers are critical partners in this effort. The new contract is both fair and fiscally responsible. It affords Superintendent Nebrikow the ability to recruit, retain, and reward teachers who are working collaboratively to advance student achievement in the Southbridge Public School That is the end of my announcements this evening. Ms. Brito is not here this evening, so there will be no report from the representative of the Student Advisory Committee. Move on to school committee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. There is no report this evening, however. Our next meeting is Monday, February 24th, at 6:30 PM in Room M100 at 25 Colav. And the agenda for that meeting will be posted sometime later next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next policy Subcommittee is scheduled for tomorrow evening, Wednesday, February 12th, at 6:30 in Room M100. On the agenda will be continuation of review and discussion on Section B of the School Committee Policy Manual, as well as review and discussion of policies J, F, A, B, C, and K, C, D. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything to report on negotiations, Mrs. Quinney?
The negotiation Subcommittee will be scheduling a time to enter into negotiations with the paraprofessional and tutor union in the near future.
Thank you. Mrs. Congdon, a report on the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last meeting was canceled due to inclement weather. We've tentatively rescheduled the meeting for Monday, February 17th, at 6:30, to be held at the Southbridge Evening News on 25 Elm Street. Our guest speaker is the editor, Adam Minor, of the Southbridge News. Also on our agenda is to discuss a parent and student teacher compact. Thank you.
Thank you. And the report of the SPED PAC liaison, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next SPED PAC meeting is February 20th at 6:00, again in Room M100. They will be discussing positions that are currently open, which include secretary, treasurer, and public relations liaison for the SPED PAC. If anyone is at all interested in either joining the SPED PAC or potentially taking over one of these positions, you are encouraged to attend that meeting, again, February 20th at 6:00 in Room M100 at 25 Colav. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no presentations this evening. Next, we have the report of the Finance Director. Hi, Ms. Sheridan.
As of December 2013, we have expended 40% of the FY14 budget and expect to be on target with the budget again this year. There is some fluctuation in the budget line items, so I will have to do some budget transfers. I will be bringing them to the school committee at the next school committee meeting. However, the bottom line of budget will not be affected by these transfers. Grant funding is now up from previously reported to a total of $2,177,716, with an additional amount of $24,000 anticipated, bringing the total amount of grant funds to $2,201,716. Unfortunately, that is still down as last year, down from last year of about $108,821,000. SPED tuition to date, we're expecting to be over budget by $90,255 in SPED tuition costs due to recent placement of SPED students. Luckily, I was able to allocate the carryover and circuit breaker from last year in the amount of $114,202 to cover these additional costs. SPED transportation, we're expecting to be over budget by $79,000 in SPED transportation costs. However, we recently purchased a new van to be used for SPED transportation. With the van, the van was purchased by funds we got from state reimbursement for homeless transportation. We are also looking to other ways to help savings, including sharing rides with other districts or combining runs if feasible. With the new van for FY14, since it was a late purchase, we don't expect a huge savings in this van purchase, but we're estimating about $7,500, which will bring that over-budget down a bit. For FY15, however, we're combining two SPED runs and using the van for this, so we should expect to see a savings of about $70,000 with that. And that includes the costs of the van and all the additional costs with that. As you can see, SPED is an ever-changing population with the possibilities of additional costs, and I'd like to let you know that we still have $556,589 of circuit breaker funds available this year. We've already gotten the first and second installment of four installments received to date, so we've gotten $278,294 thus far, which has not been used yet. What I really would like to talk about tonight is the improvements that have been made to the department and the school. We have been busy working on improving the record-keeping, adding more checks and balances, internal controls, and procedures. A comprehensive student activity guideline manual has been adopted this year and is currently being used by the middle high school. The auditors are extremely happy with these guidelines. We're working on establishing a computerized system for the student account financial activity. Right now, it's done manually on a very large ledger, and we feel that that could be risk to human error, so we're trying to get that computerized. We have the monthly budget reports that are developed and being distributed monthly to the district leadership team, as well as the members of the school committee. This has been a great tool to help monitor the budget. We have the master staff roster that has been developed and is continually updated. I have been working with the data manager for checks and balances with this report as it is an important tool. In the past, as Buzz has indicated, people never knew how many employees we have. Now with this report, we not only know the number of employees, but it's easy to see the staffing ratio. EPUMs, which is a mandatory Department of Ed report, in which you have to report all teaching, staff, position, and their school. And this report has enabled the data manager and I to improve the accuracy of this reporting. Staff attendance is now electronic. Previously, the staff attendance was done manually on cards. We now have all the staff attendance entered into the iPass system, and any database needs good checks and balances, especially in a district that has struggled with procedures and systems. We are working towards solid checks and balances and internal controls to improve not only the reporting accuracy, but the efficiency. The end-of-year EPUMs report that the data manager handles must now include staff attendance this year. It was not required before. This will allow us to electronically report the staff attendance. Employees can expect the staff access to the attendance on iPass system by March 1st. We presently are just double-checking and putting in the February data. Payroll worksheets. We have implemented payroll worksheets for the staff to help them better understand their paychecks. With schools, there are 21, 26, and lump-sum payroll options that sometimes can be difficult to understand and plan. These worksheets help the teachers to understand. We have meetings on grant expenditures and we have grant binders. The finance department is working diligently alongside Aaron Osborne, the new supervisor on instruction, to improve the monitoring and the expenditure of the grants. We now have individual grant binders for each grant with all pertinent info in the grant binders, another thing that the auditors were impressed by. Grants are now all in compliance with both state and federal regulations. Visual analytical resource. This is something that Julie Fields, the data manager, and I are very excited for. Julie is currently going to workshops and working directly with me, so in the future, we can convert and use the data in our financial reports to create an analytical resource to improve decision-making. We expect this to be completed by the end of the year. We are intending to start with the master staff roster and the budget. We want to be able to tie the budget and the financial reports to the educational metrics. It's very exciting. The new SPED van, as I indicated, we just purchased that with the state reimbursement for homeless transportation. We're hoping that that will help us to keep the SPED transportation costs down. Food service and special education reports. I have worked alongside with Katie Alesia, the director of food service, to improve the financial reports for the food service revolving account. And I'm currently working with the special education to improve their monthly reports for both tuition and transportation. And now, on a monthly basis, I get a financial report from Katie Alesia, and we've got it all in Excel and very easy for her and her assistant to do those reports. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions, or Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick one. On the staff FD breakdown, does that include all staff, including the grants, entitlements, or just the operating budget?
It does include all staff.
All staff, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, just a quick comment and then just a very quick question, Karen. Just what I would first like to do is just thank you. Obviously, you've been working very, very hard with this, and those of us who are up here, we know that our district has struggled severely with accuracy, efficiency, and the checks and balance system, a lack of procedures, a lack of protocols everywhere. And I know that, working behind the scenes, I've seen all that's going on to try to fix these issues, so I wanted to thank you for the time that you've put in for that. And the only question that I had was when you were talking about the circuit breaker funds. This is a question that just came to mind. Do we have to use those for this fiscal year, or are we able to carry circuit breaker funds into a following fiscal year?
You can carry them over one year. The monies that I already put against the SPED costs was last year, so that had to be used this year. The amount that we have right now, the $500,000 or so, can be carried over to next year if possible.
Okay.
There's also extraordinary relief that you can apply for if your SPED costs soar during the year. Extraordinary relief has to be used during that fiscal year. That cannot be carried over.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen.
I'm sorry.
Just in case people are saying $500,000 surplus in circuit breaker. And just to explain that, a student moves into this district from outside with special needs, whether it be one we could provide and so on, costs anywhere from $40,000 to $150,000. And that's one of the reasons why that grant program was created, because of extraordinary needs. Two or three students move in, and your budget is completely overspent. It's very difficult to forecast from year to year how many students will be needing special ed services, how many will be needing out-of-district services, and so on. One of the things we're looking at very carefully, the high number of students we have that are in out-of-district placements. It seemed it was easier to place students outside, bus them to wherever they need at extremely high costs, and so on. So we will be evaluating all those programs. We hope to build some of the programs internally, so it'll be a considerable savings. That SPED van isn't new. It's a used 2012 with 50,000 miles on it, and we're going to use it to address one student that travels to Pittsburgh with a day that costs us $90,000 a year. And then hopefully, we'll be able to have our SPED transportation grant be less than our regular transportation program. Right now, 18% or 20% of our students who are SPED, they cost us more to transport than the combined total for all of our yellow buses, including the parochial schools. So that's one of the things that's out of line, and we're investigating. I'm also very excited about the analytical resource, and now for the first time, we can say, how much is this program costing us to operate? And that's an important question to ask. You look at costs first, then you ask the very simple question of return on your educational investment. What kind of return are you getting on that investment for that particular program? There have been no program evaluations done in this district that I'm aware of, so this will be step one in looking to carefully evaluate what programs work. If they work, we will continue them. Which programs don't work, if they don't work, we will discontinue them. And we also want to know what programs people like to use. There's quite a few programs that I've found that people say, well, we're used to this, and we're kind of satisfied with it, but the data isn't there to show that we're getting the return on the dollar. So we're talking about metrics. We're looking not only at the cost, we're looking at achievement. And then with that, we will be able to take the next step of carefully prioritizing. We can't evaluate all the programs in one year. We don't have the staff. In fact, our staff is substantially smaller than the 2009, 2010 central office staff, and there were 11 full-time people there. We have five. And I think that we are more careful and so on. So I just want to say that about what Karen has been able to do. And as you said in reading, I think that I was, when I came here, we didn't know how many people had working for us. And I think that Dr. Domingo's question, we have now everybody that works for us that's either funded by the general account, or any grant, or any revolving account, because there are people on there now with the cafeteria staff, for example, that are funded from revolving accounts. So we have all of that, and we've discovered that we're also paying for two people in the parochial school, in the cafeteria. New one on us. Every time we peel this onion back, we keep finding some new and interesting thing. This is why we're trying to give you everything that you have, and as the community members, you know the community quite well, and you know the situation. One of the school committee members asked me, who are these? I have no idea. So now we have an accurate count of everyone in the system that is being paid with any of our dollars. I was just very surprised to find out that we have that. So I'm pleased with what Karen has reported, and as you know, every month now, we have a monthly report to each cost center. Every cost center knows how much they have, how much they spend, and it creates not just a perception of efficiency, a real efficiency. And before, when I asked a question, when I first walked in the door in January, they said, we're okay. That's not good enough. We want to know exactly where we're okay. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, here on the staff full-time equivalent breakdown, on page three, is Trinity Catholic Academy food service? Can you explain what that is?
That's what Buzz was just discussing. There's two food service employees at the Trinity Catholic Academy that work in the food service in the cafeteria.
And we pay for it?
They...
They're considered our employees?
Yes, we take the reimbursement from the state for them.
Okay.
And we're looking into this right now, but that's from my discussion with Katie Alesia. We take the food reimbursement for them from the state, but we do pay for these two food service employees.
Okay. Thank you.
We want to make sure, this is the same situation I heard with Head Start, and when they moved to our building, so someone made a decision that we would provide food service to them in a cafeteria that was supposed to have been offline. And we absorbed their employees. It's hard to go back on a decision that was made before with no written justification for it or rationale for it. So we've been going back and forth for a while. We provide food services for them, and we've been going through the contracts, the services we provide very carefully, and we're slowly, one step at a time, getting back to what I would consider a regular, commonly accepted contract that provides services for fees. We had to look at the costs and so on. We were paying for gas to deliver their food. They were charging us. There were things in there that I found to be very irregular at best. Now we have a good working relationship with them. We've established most of the things. We're still working on a couple of situations. Obviously, one of the issues tonight is the lockers, so they can meet their NAIC accreditation and so on. But the fact that it was just done very loosely and things weren't spelled out, we've had a rocky start with our relationship with them. Slowly repairing that, because it's an important program. But like I said before, we can't be subsidizing another program with our dollars. That's what I refuse to do.
Okay. Just one more thing on the Trinity Catholic Academy. This isn't new. This has been happening for years, from my understanding with Katie. And then with the Head Start, we did look into both the Head Start and the YMCA and increased the cost for the food for both of them after we did an analysis. So we have been working with those as well. So I worked a lot with Katie Alesia on the food, and we also went to some financial seminars to try to get their financials better and improve her cost analysis of the food and the services. So we have been working with that.
Lest anybody forget, we fixed our summer feeding program. We're operating in the black rather than operating year after year in the red. Just simple, basic practices in business that were worked into it.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, you said that you and Katie have increased the food charge for Head Start and the Y. I know that the charge that we, the amount that we charge for students in the district has gone up. Has that amount gone up as well at Trinity?
Trinity, in all honesty, I did not know I had these two food service people until I started to do this count on food service and then found out that we had that. That's why we're doing, looking into it right now, because I called Katie, and she said that they've always done that. that they've always done that.
So do we know how much...
So I'm trying to look into that.
How much they're charged for meals? Are they...
No, we, we get their reimbursement from the state. So the state reimburses us for their meals. So rather than them taking the reimbursement from the state, we're getting the reimbursement from the state.
And when you say reimbursement from the state, I, I guess I'm unclear.
Like, say, somebody has, is free and reduced, and they get a higher reimbursement than somebody that pays?
Two fifty-nine.
All right. So Katie's taking the reimbursement from them, rather than they reimbursing, getting the reimbursement from the state. The Southbridge is getting the reimbursement. I mean, I can update you more at the next school committee meeting on that?
Perfect.
Because I am still looking into...
Thank you.
Anybody else? Just, if I may ask a quick question. So this is so new, you may not be able to answer this question right now, but is the reimbursement that we're receiving covering the costs of these?
That's what we're going to...
That's what we're looking into.
I mean, you've got to remember that Ms. Alicia also started in December.
Right.
So we all inherited whatever agreements were made before with no documentation anywhere establishing that we could find. So as we're peeling this onion back, we keep finding more and more layers of it, and we're correcting it. So it's been quite a challenge.
The, the other thing is looking into see if, because we are required to bus the Catholic schools, so that's another thing that I've been calling my colleagues to see how they handle this, if the food service. So that's why it's, I can get back to you on it.
Thank you. All set? Next is report of the superintendent. Mr. Nibbiko?
Yes. Yesterday, I had Representative Peter Durant from this district and his staff member, Mr. Cooper, visiting, but in effort to be both sides represented, the previous representative who was Democrat, Mark Karen also came along and spent a morning at Middle High School. And one of their interests was the use of technology in education through port to the state. And they were very impressed with what they saw as far as the behavior, the students being on task, and so on. They spent a couple of hours, went into every classroom, spoke with the kids, and in fact, spent some time with one of the social studies classes discussing civics and local government. So we were pleased for the visit of our representatives, and I pressed them a little bit about how we can work more closely with the state in getting some more support for our district. On March 21st, Senator Moore and his staff will be visiting also, and I will be able to press him a little bit for some of this. So that's the, March 21st. Okay. Second thing I had, I was asked to do was, I was sick two weeks ago. I missed three school committee meetings in thirty-five years, so that's a pretty good record. And it was the first one. And, and I was requested to bring a proposal regarding the principal search timeline, and I will pass this out to them. And remember, this is just a draft. And my draft proposal, if we have to look for two principals for the elementary, I use that as an example, that there would be a fifteen-member committee, and I recommend that there be two administrators on that with, with two instructional resource specialists from each school, two faculty members, four parents, a principal, a school committee member, and a community member. This is fairly common practice in the principal search. And then we figure about a seven to nine-week process, and with, whenever the school committee, we are ready to develop this, is to ask for volunteers, organize. The meeting after the volunteers are selected by the school committee, to go through an advertising process, an application process, select the candidates that the committee will interview, and then determine the three to four finalists that they will pass on to the superintendent. And then part of the superintendent's responsibility with the school committee would be to visit their sites, that, and then a final decision being made. And so that's, that's what we developed and proposed for the school committee. The numbers can be adjusted as needed by the school committee, and then we can determine when we start. We anticipate, obviously, the best time to start would be end of this month or early next month. So we have ample time to do all of this. And we have a whole procedure worked out with visiting the finalists, visiting the school, seeing that, and then have an interview process, and then it would be important that the faculty and parent PTAs can, can interview the, and have a greet and meet with the finalists. So I think that's important in that respect. Okay?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
All right. Oh, yes. In response to that earlier question about access to the high school, I was surprised with a brand-new school that they didn't build ways that the community access part of it could be blocked off on the rest of the school. And so the only reasonable, cost-effective solution, and I'm going to have Mr. Coma look at it, would be to, to purchase a portable partition that you could pull across, and then open up that side door by the gymnasium that can go right in. Or we might have to purchase two to block off the academic wings if you use a theater. And then we will make sure there's a signage goes up saying which doors you can come into at the particular thing. So, so that is it. I wouldn't want to be standing outside today. It's...
Thank you. Anybody? Okay. Moving on to agenda item twelve, school committee actions. We have a vote to accept a donation of movie tickets via ASPRA from Cinemagic to students participating in the ASPRA Academy at Southbridge Middle High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds. Is there any discussion? Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, we, we received the information that pertains to proposing this vote, and I have a question probably for the superintendent. The letter that is signed by the program coordinator by ASPRA, running an after-school program at Middle High School, is printed on, on Southbridge official letterhead without any endorsement by anybody from the school department. And I, I have no reason to believe that this would be done without the endorsement from the school department, but there is no indication that, that is indeed the case. So I would like just to look at that.
ASPRA, if you remember when we opened up Cole Avenue, that was one of the group requesting use office space and so on, and that was granted as a community group. They came down to us. She doesn't have any secretary, so we helped her out. And obviously, they're doing some good work with our Hispanic students as, as far as providing supports for them, providing opportunities for them, tutoring work and so on. So I have, and, and I also supported a movie that was shown a while ago through the music department to show some of the successes and so on of aspiring Hispanic students. So we, yes, we do support that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say that I too was confused about the letterhead and the signature.
Should have been in black paper.
Yeah. Or somebody at the school should have signed it on behalf. But anyway, that being said, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion carries. Agenda item twelve B, a vote to approve a seven-D driver position for the Special Education Department for transportation purposes.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Domingo?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Did you want to say anything, Buzz, about this?
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, after both of them were, well, actually, there's two positions. One is a driver, and then one is a monitor, bus van. That particular route we were looking at, and it's been bothering me for a while, was one student who has a rather lengthy ride and is costing us $90,000. By purchasing a van, we paid how much? Fifteen thousand dollars for that van, approximately. And, and then being able to hire our own driver and, and monitor, and both positions require that they be, have a valid seven-D license, so if the driver's absent, the monitor can drive. And then we also have plans to add other students to that route since we have that. As I said earlier, that report, that, that the transportation has never been looked at very carefully here. And, and we need to take a, not a microscope, but a magnifying glass, I guess is a better term, and, and look at all of these, and then see if we can also work with other districts that send students to the same place, and we can cost share. So I think that, just, because again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but last year when I came here, we were paying $500 a day to transport three students around town at the cost of $2,500 a week. And I immediately put an end to that by buying two old vans for $8,500. And then, and then having our staff that was already using it, who already had seven-D licenses. So we didn't have to hire a driver. We bought a van, and we saved easily sixty, seventy thousand dollars in one fell swoop that we were able to do that. So, so one of my goals will be to, to, to probably look at that and see where we can consolidate and buy maybe one or two more vans, and then run our own special ed transportation. We have no intentions of getting involved in the yellow school buses. I think AA does a good job of providing service for us, but certainly within the town, and then if we look and then develop a very careful plan for next, starting next year, I would like to also buy half a bus, one of the small buses, that we can transport our athletic Golf team, tennis team, the ones that has small numbers around here, rather than paying a minimum of $350, and the coaches could get their license. And that's done pretty much, and lots, colleges do it all the time. You see the college, the coaches driving the van, so on. So there are, there are ways that we can now look at dollars that are currently going into non-academic uses, redirect them back into the classroom, rather than saying, we don't have enough money for this, we don't have enough money for that. So, so my motto everywhere I've ever worked was redirection of existing resources, rather than asking for more. How can we take a look, evaluate programs, and move it to something that has a higher priority? So this is one that has a very high priority in the, on my, on my list of things to do. This is one area that we can save tens of thousands of dollars without affecting any academic program, or without negatively affecting any student or anyone else. I think that's the key to that. We're going to hire more people, and then we're going to have drivers. Karen? I thought you were going to help me a little bit.
Is there any other discussion on this? Mrs. Quinney?
Just one question. Thank you, Madam Chair. The position for both the driver and the monitor are listed as full-time positions?
Yes.
How do we, is there a certain number of hours someone has to fulfill in order to be considered a full-time employee?
Yes, seven hours.
Seven hours?
Right.
A day?
A day, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Just a quick question. Once both of these employees are hired, well, are we looking to have them start during this fiscal year, prior to the end of the school year? Is this an FY-15 plan?
We're hoping to start right after the February vacation.
Okay.
So we can cut out that high cost.
Okay, very good.
So if we cut out that cost, we're going to save forty percent at least of $90,000 right off the bat.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon? Through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent. Now, will they work in the summer as well for transportation?
If we need it, yeah. Because we have twelve-month programs.
Right.
And so again, that would be, because we pay staff all year round, we deliver kids all year round. I mean, once we do the budget, I'll have a grid pull-down of all of our, we gave you a list of all of the students, all of their trips, and all of their costs. It's itemized for you on the last report that we gave you. Now I want to get a map and lay it out and then see. And then I think that one of the functions of the director of operations, we're working with transportation, will be to talk with the other special ed directors in the region and find out where we can cost share. We have, if we have a van going that way, we can add one or two more kids to it.
Great. Thank you.
Just a little reminder of that. Was it the cost analysis before we purchased the van?
We did include the, the driver and the monitor in it, and we were still saving money with these two runs. We did the number of days left in the year, and it still was a savings.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item twelve C, vote to approve a bus monitor position for the Special Education Department for transportation purposes.
So moved.
Dr. Domingo makes the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
The motion carries. Agenda item twelve D, move that the Southbridge School Committee declare four hundred and sixty tan lockers located at twenty-five Cole Avenue as surplus items to be removed from the building at a future date.
So moved.
Dr. Domingo makes the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there discussion on this agenda item? Did you want to say anything, Buzz, or no?
Yeah. The Head Start program came to me a while ago, and part of their accreditation process is a visit from a site team, and the school, the site has to pass certain standards. And these lockers that were in that building, I think we sent you a little note, that have been in there forty, fifty years, they're all rusted at the bottom, and they were concerned that, that, obviously, a bus is not good for three- and four-year-olds to be around. And so they asked that we could remove them, and then, and then at their cost, they would paint and clean up that whole area. Those lockers can't be used for anything else. I think you've had much experience with this. The school system declares them surplus property. It goes over to the town, and then they, then they dispose of it. Those lockers are only worth scrap metal. It's the only value there is to it. They can, they can't be reused at any new school because of the size and dimensions of, of the locker. They're, they're at least forty years old. And then, again, another aspect, we're working with Head Start to build a facility for those children.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Agenda item thirteen is unfinished business. We have second readings of policies, BDA, BDD, BDE, BDF, BDG, and BE.
Madam Chair, make a motion to waive the reading of Agenda item thirteen, items A through F.
Second. We have a motion from Dr. Domingo, a second by Mrs. Congdon, to combine Agenda items thirteen A through F and waive the readings. Do I have a, I'm sorry, I have a second from Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I went over the changes last meeting, the differences between the previous ones and the revisions that we've made. If anyone has any questions, again, they're posted across from the Director of Pupil and Personnel Services office on the policy board. Any further questions, you can certainly email me. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Under new business, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, in council chambers. Member forum, are there any members who would like to address, who'd like to speak this evening? Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to say that I received a notice home from Eastford Road School that they'll be hosting for the kindergartners there on Thursday, March sixth, from six to eight, the Feeling Big Family Literacy Night. And kindergarten parents can write the name of the student and their teacher if they'll be attending. So it's Thursday, March sixth, from six to eight at Eastford Road School. So, it's Thursday, March sixth, from six to eight at Eastford Road School. Each child's going to get to participate in four centers, science, math, and English arts activities, which align with the common core curriculum for kindergarten. Um, I've attended a couple of these events put on by Superbada and Mrs., um, Caroline Fontaine, and they're really great, and the kids really have a good time. So, parents, send back your, um, forms if your child will be attending. Again, it's Thursday, March sixth, from six to eight. Also, um, I just wanted to say that I believe tomorrow at Charlton Street School and West Street School, report cards will be sent home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ladies, anything? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to send a thank you to the maintenance department. I know we had a big snowstorm last Wednesday, and we hadn't had that much snow in a long time. Um, and as a, I had gotten a couple of calls from parents who were doing, had kids at West Street, and they were, um, concerned about all the snow that was on the side of the sidewalks in the road. And, um, Mr. Como and his maintenance department did an extraordinary job getting that out of there as soon as they could. So, I just wanted to thank them for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wrote a letter to the editor that appeared in yesterday's Southbridge Evening News, and I stand by every word in it. However, some people have taken exception to what I wrote and have said that the threats, um, I made in it were essentially bullying. Everyone is entitled to their opinion and perception. However, I do not view, um, those statements as threats, but as a commitment, a commitment to the students of this district and the Southbridge community as a whole, to expect better because we all deserve better. Nothing will make me waver in this commitment to ensuring that every student in this school district receives a high-quality education, one that is worthy of them and one that they deserve. Not spreading lies about me in public or private venues, nor having a repeat of an audience member threatening physical violence against me, nothing. There is nothing that can be done by anyone to prevent me or distract me from doing everything that is needed in order to ensure that every student in the Southbridge School District receives the quality education that they deserve. We have been an underperforming school district for ten years. For ten years, this community has failed its students. Change is long overdue. I am not sitting here to make friends. I am sitting here to make a difference in the lives of those children and in this community. I am not sorry if that makes you uncomfortable or makes you angry. We had, should have been angry for ten years. It's about time we got angry and did what needed to be done for the students of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, we will have executive session this evening, um, with a, uh, the purpose is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body